Hey, we're live.
Five, four, three, two, one.
Motion by the Majority Leader, Councilmember Rivera, second by Councilmember Noakowski. We are now returning from the recess and will now go back into the Committee of the Whole to consider the mayor's budget proposal for 2020 to 2021. This is the stage of our public hearing. The public has been notified by multiple media avenues. The public has had the chance to send emails, call our council staff, also to comment on Facebook, and now even now to comment live on the council's page. So if you are a part of a watch party right now, we may not see it. You would have to go directly to the Buffalo Common Council's page in order for that to occur. And so as we, this is our portion where we hear from the public. And then at the end of this hearing, the Chief of Staff will give you information on our workshops where we drill down into the numbers a little bit more, where the commissioners are, some of them will be asked to come back to the council and we work on numbers. So I just wanted to make it very plain of what this hearing is about. It is the hearing to hear from the public. So I'm going to ask the Chief of Staff or whomever he has assigned if we could first start with any emails that we have received.
Malcolm Earth, the Council Chief of Staff, thank you, Mr. Council President. We have received only one comment. Actually, no, that wasn't email, that was voicemail. We have no emails at this time, sir.
All right, and we have made that opportunity for people to send emails and announced it several times. Phone comments that we have received.
Yes, we have a voicemail recording transcribed. I'll turn this now to Communications Section Leader, Taisha Saint-Gene.
Good morning, council members. The first voicemail that we had, actually the only, was from the organization Fair Fines and No Fees Coalition is Buffalo Police Department being intentional about not issuing tickets for minor traffic infractions.
Okay, and that was for the budget?
Yes, that was the voicemail regarding the budget. Probably they're, I'm assuming they're concerned about the tickets during this time and how it probably affects the budget, but that exactly was the organization's question.
Concerns revenue collection, sir.
Yes, then let us send that to the police department for response during our workshops. Do we have anything at this point on Facebook Live?
Yes, so the first comment is Gloria Todd. Are they still mowing the lots? But we replied to that as 3-1-1 from their last public budget hearing. Is the keeping up with that? The next is Xavier Jones. Will the city of Buffalo be hiring from the next band for Buffalo Police? So I'm assuming are they still hiring for police officers with the new budget? Victoria Ross.
We're gonna pause in between each one so that if there is an answer, we are able to give it. We did hear from the police department that during the pause, that the people who are already in the academy, I believe, will remain. I see President Pro temp shaking his head, am I right on that? The...
Yeah, they paused the police academy, but those members of the public who were in that academy will be going back into it.
And other than that, that's all the information we have. Probably that person can call, not probably, they can call Human Resources to find out what the next step is.
Next question was from Victoria Ross. She has a couple of questions, so I'm just gonna start with the first one. Is the city forgiving outstanding tickets during this time? Particularly, particularly any late fees?
Anybody have that answer? I know that the time on the tickets have been extended. I'm not sure on the late fees. Make sure we have her name. If any other council member has that answer, I don't. Councilmember Noakowski?
I do. I believe that they will not accrue late fees, that that is paused. But if you had previously received a late fee prior to the COVID-19 pandemic, I believe that that charge will still remain, but no tickets will accrue any fines or interest or whatnot during this time and during this pause order. I believe the mayor did that. That was one of his first things that he did.
Thank you, sir. And Ms. Saint-Jack, Taisha, if you could, I want us to respond right back to those folks or you could do it in the inbox or right there publicly on the page. I think publicly on the page is better so that other people who may have the question that it's answered. So if you want to check with departments, but so far, this is our answer according to our council member.
Absolutely, Council President. And the last Facebook comment was, I'm sorry if I butchered his name, Falu Karim. Just wanted to know, city employees' jobs are secured based on the budget?
So that's an answer that I cannot answer. I can say that the mayor's proposed budget does not include any layoffs. However, it does hinge on significant money from the federal government, over 60, I believe, about $65 million. It does hinge on the casino revenue, and it does hinge that if either of those do not come through, that there could be borrowing, and then the mayor would present a contingency plan to the council for what would occur. At this point, and I can only say at this point, the budget does not include any layoffs. And as a matter of fact, the proposed budget also includes mayor's summer youth jobs.
Okay, Council President, there are actually some more comments on Facebook, so I'm gonna read those now. Justice Hill, considering the economic hardship that people are experiencing and will continue to experience after the pandemic, will the city eliminate the 13 traffic fees that exist or forgive all outstanding fines and fees?
I think that was just answered, but I'll, we'll answer it again. Councilmember Noakowski, you want to answer that one again?
With Taisha, was the question was if they would forgive all the fees?
Yes.
You know, we've...
They forgive all outstanding fees and fines.
I don't believe that the, you know, the mayor just, I know, has had paused any interest or fees in fines during this COVID-19, but previous ones that were given out, I don't know, but that's something that we would follow up with the mayor.
And at this time, Council President, these are all the questions and comments on Facebook.
Taisha, let me just interrupt you. We have one more comment from Daniel Sack. I believe the council should delete the budget item for City Hall entrance security. There is simply no need, though I've heard a justification, is that the officials sometimes get death threats. If that is the case, why wouldn't 24/7 security be assigned to officials? One threatening incident a few years ago is not justification for the cost.
All right, and thank you for the comment. The move for security was not just for officials, it was for the safety of all who enter City Hall. I don't think many of us were thrilled about it, or frankly, are still thrilled about it, of having people having to go through those protocols. But I don't know of many other government buildings. As a matter of fact, I don't know of one government building in our area that does not have some type of security protocol.
And Council President, just to follow up on what you were saying, you're absolutely correct that it wasn't just about elected officials or other workers working at City Hall, it's about the general public. There's tours, there's people throughout City Hall all the time. And I think one thing I've noticed and other people have noticed that brought to my attention since G4 has taken over, there are fewer people walking around City Hall. So I don't know if that's a matter of maybe they were, had something on them they can't get through the doors with now, or whatever it is, but there are definitely fewer people walking around inside the building on any given day.
And in Council, President Pro temp, you're totally correct. The, and each month, the Chief of Staff provides us from the security, a list of incidents. And I don't think we have had a non-incident month. And that is from people carrying weapons into City Hall, to incidents of people who have come in to actually commit violence. And so we see that list every day, and I think it does discourage those who may try to just utilize an opportunity of having no security in the past. And I think the, the cost of outfitting every elected official with security would be much more than it would be for what we have now. And even if it wasn't, and this is about the public, not elected officials.
And another just quick comment, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Two things. I was a staffer when this had began. I believe that it started out being paid by a federal grant from Homeland Security and not by City Resources. And if it is aligned budget, could staff show me where in the budget it is?
It's a good point.
As Council President and Councilmember Noakowski, as the Chief of Staff representing the council on the city's security hall task force, we do get those updates on a regular basis. In fact, I'm filing the previous month's statistics on things that have been caught at the door tomorrow for the deadline, and you should be seeing the most recent month. And yes, there, there have been a lot of things that have been stopped at the door since this program was implemented for the safety of people in the entire building, not just the elected officials. For Councilmember Noakowski, when we started a lot of the security projects that raised the security posture of City Hall, including the bollards, the security staff, we were supported by grants that were applied for and coordinated through BPD. However, there was also some supporting O&M budget lines as well, which has picked up for the ongoing costs of those, and we can get you those line items at a later time and follow up.
Thank you.
There's a couple more questions, Council President. Question is from Leslie Bishop. Is the council in support of Senator Kennedy's proposed legislation regarding driver's license suspension?
Council has not taken a position on it.
Okay, next question, Bianca Vega. What about the House auction? Are we going to postpone that with the hardships that everyone's going to deal with?
At this point, we have not been informed whether it will be postponed with COVID. We have no idea what, whether the state will still be on pause, whether there will be a resurgence. So I think that is, at this point, we don't have an answer to that because we just have no idea the direction of this virus.
Justice Hill, why is the city still impounding cars in the midst of COVID-19 for minor violations?
The impound, and you know, we can get that information from the administration, but there are times that cars have to be impounded, they have to be moved off of the street if they have been there. Because we're in the midst of this pandemic, doesn't mean that we still are not moving vehicles. I would have to, we would have to have a specific situation. I'm sure the administration is still getting calls from people with blocked driveways and those type of things. And so we have to continue to run the city. If there is a specific incident, they should call their council member.
Council President?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, and in addition to what you said, people need parking blocking driveways. I know the Parking Commissioner did talk about lax parking restrictions and things of that nature, but there are scenarios where if you're parked blocking a fire hydrant, things of that nature, and it's a public safety issue, that's a completely different story.
Absolutely, and you know, there are vehicles out there, unfortunately, that have multiple, multiple, multiple tickets, and when they are flagged, that process, I'm sure, continues.
Next question, Nate Boyd. Is the city about to pay $100,000 plus for, sorry, for a lawyer at the time when the city is in financial crisis? If so, why?
Yeah, that's gonna be a part of our discussions and our workshops, and so it is a part of the proposed budget, but we're gonna discuss it in our workshops.
Okay, next question, Leslie Bishop. Is there any real estate available through the city that can be used for homeless or homeless individuals or returning individuals from prison?
I'm not sure if that is in the budget at this time. I didn't, I didn't see that in the budget most of the time. A lot of that is when we get grants, we can check and answer that directly. If any other council member has an answer there or something I'm missing, please just chime in. Next.
Give us one second, people are typing in right now, so let me just give a double check on here. Okay, here's another one. Nate Boyd, why hasn't the council addressed the concerns of residents about all these 5G towers popping on across town?
We received a comment and council, who is that, Councilmember Wingo?
Yeah, the, the Common Council actually has, well, we drafted a resolution regarding the moratorium placed on erecting new cell phone towers that will have 5G on them. We don't have any scientific data just yet that has been submitted to us that will suggest that there are any direct correlations with the sicknesses and the things that are happening in the community. We have not had that been submitted to the council as of yet, but we did draft the resolution, and I believe Corporation Council can speak more to how we're going about putting that into legislation, into policy.
The Law Assistant Corporation comes to Karen. At the moment, OSP is making amendments to the Unified Development Ordinance, and so I, I have been informed that cell towers would be one of those amendments to be included in the, in the amendments for either August or September this year. Thank you.
I, I'm hoping that the community can understand our position in that we just can't cease and desist work that has already been approved, and I hope that the community can also appreciate our efforts in trying to put a layer, a degree of protection for them as they are able to now come in and have hearings before some of these companies are in fact putting up these new cell phone towers. To my dismay, I received several phone calls regarding a brand new cell phone tower that went up on Connolly and Bailey that is in the Maston District, but of course, because it borders University District, we had calls from both sides of Bailey regarding the cell phone towers that are supposedly having 5G equipment placed on them. So we were very, very surprised to know that residents had left from their homes to go to work. When they came back home, there was 200-foot tower pole installed on the corner of their street. So we immediately drafted a moratorium under the capable hands and direction of our Corporation Council. And from that, hopefully, again, the community can appreciate the fact that we are amending the city ordinance to ensure that there is a layer of or degree of protection for them so that they know what's happening and who's installing what where, and they have to come before the community, before that's done in residential areas, in residential areas. So hopefully that answers the question. Hopefully, the community can appreciate what we're doing as legislators to draft sensible policy to ensure that we're protecting their quality of life.
Thanks, sir. Next comment?
Justice Hill, will the city cancel the school zone speeding program in light of current financial strains that Buffalo residents are experiencing and instead use traffic calming strategies that do not put people in debt?
Well, the answer is that right now it is suspended, school is not in, so that is not an active traffic calming measure that is being used. The city has signed a contract, so I would imagine that when we go back into session, that it would be used. The Common Council did pass an ordinance that those cameras would only be operational during school hours, and so at this point, they are not being utilized.
Mario Bennett, why the city removed all basketball hoops?
We, so the administration made a decision based on recommendations from healthcare professionals and our county of social gathering. Now, I'll be very, you know, the question has been asked, and I was concerned, and I have expressed my concern, that as we are opening up other sporting events with social distancing and with protocols that we have to consider others. Also, people did report in about mass gatherings at the basketball courts. However, I've been very open and any other council member that might want to weigh in that as protocols are being set for golf, as protocols are being set for boating, that they should be set for other sports.
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Mm-hmm, Councilmember Wingo?
Thank you, I appreciate your response. The decisions that are made are based off of precautionary measures to ensure that these contact sports were being minimized because you, you can't possibly practice social distancing on a basketball court. It's impossible. Therefore, because we had asked initially, the city of Buffalo had initially asked for people to not utilize the parks, the playgrounds and the basketball courts, folks were still using them in direct, you know, violation, I should say, not violation, but directly against the wishes of the city. And of course, that would exacerbate the, the COVID-19 spread. So we were trying to do everything we possibly could to mitigate and eradicate the effects of this virus by going to the most drastic measure, which was taking the rims off of the basketball courts. I mean, if it wasn't necessary, I don't think it would have been done. We appreciate that question. We understand the concern because we understand that a lot of folks on the east side of Buffalo and in other areas, they really, really love to play basketball, but you cannot practice social distancing on a basketball court. And if you were to get sick, you know, and if you were to have a great immune system and you're playing on a basketball court, you could spread it to someone else. So we were just looking out for the interest of everyone, so I absolutely supported taking the rims off of the courts. I want to make that perfectly clear. I really supported that because I don't need any of our young folks going home to their parents, getting their parents sick, and their parents going to their grandparents' homes, taking care of their grandparents, and their grandparents getting sick. I won't allow my children, even though they've not been exposed to anyone, anywhere, I've not even allowed my children to go to my mother's house because I don't want to potentially have my children spread the virus to my mother. So it is a, it is a serious, serious issue, and I'm, I'm hoping that, again, the community can appreciate the effort to try to mitigate and, and stop the spread of the COVID-19 virus.
And just so that people know, it's not a council decision, because I know people may say, why did the council do that? There may be individual members that supported it or even asked for it. However, it was not a movement of the council. Next question?
Just to follow, just to follow up on the Council President's point, he's absolutely correct. The Common Council did not remove those rims off the courts. That is something that the Department of Public Work does because they manage all of our public spaces. But again, some of the information had to come through the Common Council as we are your first degree of, of elected official that you can get to. So with that said, yeah, I, we, I speak for myself. I did report when there were people on basketball courts because I think that it is not sensible for us to be playing a contact sport when we should be practicing social distancing.
Thanks, sir. Next question?
Justice Hill, once the pandemic is over, will the city stop initiating driver license suspensions for unpaid fines and fees or for not appearing in court and reinstate driver's license suspensions for non-safety reasons?
Because that's a legal question, I don't know if our Corporation Council wants to pine or we want to check on that and get back to her.
Assistant Corporation comes to Karen Gordon. I think it's more than just a legal question, it also is a policy question, and it's a determination that would have to be made by the Common Council as a whole and not necessarily by the Law Department. So, and definitely something that would, would need a lot more discussions and thought. So at this point, I wouldn't be able to give a response directly to that.
So can we make sure that we have that for the workshops and to have that discussion? I think it's important when someone raises something like that to look and see if that is something that would be feasible.
Council President?
President Pro temp?
Just a quick question for Karen. Karen, would that include New York State vehicle traffic law as well?
Um, it, yes, it could most definitely include that, especially when you're speaking about suspensions of driver's license. We individually don't have the authority to do that, our authority comes from the New York State law. So if New York State was to come out and say, well, in those instances, we are not pursuing suspension anymore, then it would be something that a court will then practice and ultimately the city. So as I said, it's something that we could have discussions on, but ultimately, we might not even be the final determining body on this issue.
Thank you. Next question?
Mario Bennett, if nobody pays the rent, pays rent, would they be evicted?
Corporation Council, can you talk about the executive order as it deals with eviction?
From what I understand at the moment, the pause order also requested to, to extend that all, I guess, rents and other forms of outstanding payments, because I know, for instance, the mortgage industry as well, to where necessary and where it was possible to put a pause on it as well. I cannot speak specific to rents across the boards. I know in New York City, for instance, they were encouraging landlords to consider not evicting individuals, and I think more on point is the fact that the court system was, was not functioning or not operating. And so housing court was shut down and no evictions were going to be considered, and all, all evictions that were before the court were going to be suspended. So I think, thinking about it along that line, suggested to the broader public that cease on eviction was necessary or was proposed softly, I guess, by the administration. So yes, individuals, if they have their money to pay the rent, they should, but right now, I don't think anybody would be evicted per se since there's no, the courts, the housing court is not in operation at this moment at all pending, eviction cases were suspended.
Thank you, Corporation Council, and I think you make a very good point about the housing court is not in session. So people who are receiving and they could be receiving an eviction notice, you should seek counsel, because sometimes people don't realize that just because you get an eviction notice or a landlord tells you, you gotta move in 72 hours, if they have not gone through the process, you do not. And so it is important that you seek legal counsel if you're being evicted at this point.
Robert Harris, during this time of unemployment, are people still required to pay bills like gas, water, and electricity?
And Corporation Council, you can tell me if I'm wrong, but from what I know, they still have to pay, you still have to pay your bills. That's a, an obligation that you individually made, but what has been suggested is because many of the companies are giving, you know, breaks, are saying pay interest only, is that you would have to contact those individual companies for an answer to that question. I can say that the city of Buffalo is not shutting off, for instance, water and those type of things. So that's important that you understand that the part that we can deal with is your water, and at that, at this point, there will be no shut offs, and that was an order by the mayor of the city of Buffalo. Um, and that was in order by the mayor of the city of Buffalo.
That's correct.
Thank you, ma'am.
Council President, if you can give Facebook a couple more minutes, I know people are still trying to comment. Um, so if you can give us a minute or two to see if some more people would like to be a part of the public hearing.
All right, we'll give a few more minutes and then if um those items that come up later, uh, we will still, we had asked that you would share them with council members. Um, and we can still uh consider uh them in the workshops. And while we're we giving just a slight pause, Chief of Staff, maybe you want to give that email address again um and how people can continue uh to get this information?
Yes, sir. So in addition to commenting on the video that's live right now on Facebook, people can send us emails at councilstaff, uh, councilstaff@city-buffalo.com or they can call in at seven one six eight five one five one zero five. The lines are open right now. And Council President, if I may, there for the question on uh payments of rent and being able to manage that for bills, there are a lot of useful resources available from New York State. Uh, if anyone wants to check out hcr.ny.gov, there is a very helpful uh question and answer for both tenants and landlords uh about paying rents and various utility bills as well.
Thank you.
I have another one, Council President.
All right, is this the last one logged in?
At this moment, this is the last one that's been commented on Facebook Live.
Thank you.
Orlando Dixon, will the city of Buffalo commit to removing the thirteen fees added in twenty eighteen to relieve the financial stress that will come from COVID-19 crisis?
Um, I think this has been answered in a variety of ways, but Corporation Council, can you opine?
Um, Assistant Corporation Council, I'm not sure what he means by remove the thirteen fees. Um, uh, I would assume that he um, he's probably speaking about additional um ways that we have uh determined to make or to increase our budget over the past couple of years. Um, and and if that's the case, I I don't think it would be um fair to say that we're going to just go back and remove it because as you can see, the city currently is having fiscal um issues. Um, and we are now hoping that the state would um assist and remedy those issues that we're having. So to say that we would go back and remove the fees means that we would be preparing also to increase and add to our fiscal crisis. And I don't think we at a point where we can make those determination right now, um, considering that if we were to do that, there are other um, I guess, fallouts of that, right? We can end up having to uh do reduction in workforce um and make changes, you know, within the city that might affect residents in a more detrimental way.
Thank you. Taisha, anything else?
At this moment, no. Um, but if we do receive anything, I will make sure that I have all these comments where the council members have a opportunity to look at it and we'll send it to the right departments with Chief of Staff part of the process.
And just reminding the public that this was a public hearing for the budget. Um, we will uh prepare uh to um go into workshops and I'll have the Chief of Staff announce to the public uh when those workshops will be.
Workshops will begin next week, Monday, May eleventh at ten AM. We will broadcast live here on Facebook. That's facebook.com/BFLOCC.
All righty, then uh we have nothing else. Uh, we're going uh to prepare to uh close the Committee of the Hall um in just a few seconds and we resolve back into the Common Council uh to begin to work on the mayor's uh budget. I want to thank all of the public and all of the council members and staff, uh, especially staff for making this happen in a very public way um in the best way that we can during a pandemic. Um, I think that this has been a powerful tool, um, an engagement process with uh with the public. And we probably have said this before, have had more public um attention input um and and then we have um you know, ever. Uh, because number one, everybody's at home, but number two, uh, we continue to make um our deliberations public and other cities have called to find out how exactly uh the Buff- that Buffalo is continuing uh to move forward. So if there's nothing else, it is moved by uh Councilmember Rivera uh that being no further business in connection with consideration of the mayor's uh budget proposal for twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one. The Committee of the Hall now resolves into the Common Council is seconded by Councilmember Galumbet. Thank you. We're adjourned. I'm sorry, we are resolved.